Been built up at all.
Quorum, we don't have anyone online, is there anyone who has signed up to speak any matters from the pub? Alright, um approval of the minutes. So I had a, I had a couple of things.
Alright.
Well, you may have them as well. Um Andy's not mentioned at all as either a director present or absent. And JT unless there's been a rehiring, I don't know about, um is no longer the deputy director.
And I think there may be a prior set of minutes where he was listed to maybe.
Okay, I'll go ahead and double check.
Check.
And then we have the other one.
Yeah, and then in um in the, under the Thomas Jefferson Foundation bond discussion, counsel is misspelled. Should be C O E N T S. The lawyer's office knows that. Well, I got it.
I'll do that for the record, I've, I've.
Yes.
Insulted with, with Avery and on number seven. Closed session, he's going to include a copy of the actual.
Of the full motion here.
Alright, um is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. For a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Alright, the minutes are approved. Financial report. Avery, you have anything?
Yes, so we've got a couple of things, so we'll start with FY twenty six, which is the new financial year that we're in. Still a little early, uh the only thing, one two things love of the is some accrued interest from the funds of the share pool. And a little early on this, but the one thousand dollars that we invoiced for the Thomas Jefferson Foundation. That's just FY twenty six. And then the second half of this is FY twenty five year end report, so some um tying up of the end of last financial year. So you'll have three reports in your packet, the second, the very last one is FY twenty five end. And then the following page is some year end notes, so there's some highlights from that. Uh feel free to read through those, uh the only notes I'll put for the end of FY twenty five is uh we're tracking down the last of the Centaur Martha Jefferson bond revenue. And the, okay, that's good. And the C back, those are the only two from there. And then if you, if you guys have any questions or comments on the highlights that I had written out there for the year end notes. Um, this is the first time we're doing it, the sort of year in summary, so whatever you guys find useful, not useful. Happy to take any feedback you guys have for what you want to see going forward on this type of stuff.
Um, I thought the summary was good, I did, I do have a suggestion out of, as I was looking at it today. And I wonder, if, if, one, on the performance agreements, can you go to that one?
Yes.
So I think we should take a bunch of stuff off this, okay, really. The, the bonds, the loan repayments. Are not really performance agreements, they're really other things.
Okay.
I, I, I think what we're trying to track are, is, you know, either mostly money that's going out and what have we committed? To, to put out there and, and so I think like contributions, I don't think we have performance agreements with them, but I think we should track. You know, it'd be nice to say, you know, how much have we contributed? What's our total commitment, you know, what's our outstanding balance? And then sort of related to that. You know, whether we need a, an extra column, I'm not sure whether it's in the performance agreement or in the financials that sort of says. You know, beyond that current fiscal year, is there an obligation?
So that was the original intention, so the way it's set up right now, um so if you look at these two separately, not the year and the other two. The first one is just a snapshot, uh the one that's really blank right now, is just a snapshot of the current financial year. And this work in progress of this performance agreements, one is supposed to be a snapshot of the entire life of the agreements. But I think you're right, I think that would probably track better if we added the column of maybe uh the length of time for the agreements. Or something that makes a little more sense to delineate between the two.
Yes, we can work on that. Okay, those are just, I, I think that would help, you know, just focus on a little bit narrower work, because things like the bonds really are part of what we're, that's right about it.
That makes sense.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, uh is there a motion to approve the financial report? So moved, second?
Second.
Alright, all favor?
Aye.
Alright. Financial report is approved. New business, E R E F Y twenty five seven.
I'll take that. Thank you, Avery. Hi, um in your packets, I believe you should have a handout that illustrates um just with a little. Thank you very much, um just a little bit more graphic appeal. It's a summary of the Business Intervention and Expansion Program that. We had the teamwork to develop and um I did my very best to execute during fiscal year twenty five, um it's been a. A few years of restructuring, so this really truly has been. One of the first years that uh we as a department have had staffing and uh the ability to focus particularly on. Executing the, this program, so this is just a, a short overview of the, the program, its purpose. Uh the, the goals of the B R A program and some of the overall findings from the visits that. That um that we performed. So ultimately, as, as you all probably know, the B R A program, it's a service that we provide, it's to improve. The experience that existing customers in our community have, uh primary businesses specifically. And primary businesses, as you know, are, are companies that, that generate fifty percent of their revenue from outside of, of Albemarle County. So we, we typically try to establish a relationship so that we can understand their, their challenges and opportunities that. Um that they come in to contact with day to day. And then the, the special part is providing tailored resources or customer solutions to help them address those challenges. And basically, we work with them to connect them with resources like workforce training or access to capital, uh education. Uh professional ecosystem support, et cetera. We worked it with the uh strategic and performance and strategic partnerships office, like I'm always getting that wrong and I don't. Say it right every time, but I think that was right, right?
Performance and strategic planning.
Planning, okay. Uh we worked with them on our spear goals, which was ultimately to set benchmarks for us to, to conduct during the year. And as we collected um all of our data at the beginning of the fiscal year, our goal was to complete twelve Business for Change and Expansion visits. Uh with businesses in the county over the course of fiscal year twenty five. And we're, we're proud to, to, to say that we conducted over fifty. Um and, and feel like this is something we can continue to offer at this level uh moving forward.
Now, I've suggested that maybe you uh overshoot so much, then you.
Maybe pull back a little.
Much bigger target next time.
Thank you, Don.
There's a little tip.
Okay, well, you never know till you try, right? Uh and this is a, this is overview of the, the sectors that, that we visited with uh during fiscal year twenty five. And as you can see, those first three lines there are moving forward into our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Focal points that we'll try to, to work with again, maybe down to the. Just some, some pictures, I, I recognize somebody in one of those pictures there, but two people actually. Uh just some, some uh cool visuals from some of the visits that, that we've made and then. The honeys cutting your, you're, you're getting your head cut off there, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh and this is one of the announcements that, that we were able to celebrate last October with Afton Scientific's expansion. Uh they are, they're moving forward with their two hundred million dollar, two hundred job expansion off of Avon. And um we just, we love to celebrate these, these big wins. Um, we recently uh distributed a business climate questionnaire to our stakeholders and. Also visited as, as you know, with, with these companies and along with our Economic Development Strategic Plan stakeholder roundtables. A lot of the information that we received, we uh, we tried to condense into a little bit more of a digestible format, but. Some of the common themes that, that we received are listed here from, from those three sources, um I won't, I won't go over. Them word by word, but I certainly connect with me if you have any questions about some of those feedback pieces that we did receive.
A lot of comments on regulatory issues.
Yeah.
We hear a lot of that when we're out with companies, um we also use the time to. Um share a lot of resources, so we've been able um to do a lot of these visits with um. Uh staff from the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, as well as the state B E D P um business team, and so we're able to help. Based on the, the um, the growth trajectory or challenges that the company might be facing, we're able to, to connect them with resources for grant programs, training resources. Uh make connections on workforce, um to workforce partners and uh PBCC, for example. Um and so it's, it's kind of a two-way um opportunity for us to share some things that they might not be aware of and for them to give us. Um some of their candid lived experiences.
Thanks.
Other, oh, go ahead, no, go ahead. Uh do we, um one of the things that we don't really have a lot of control over, um deal with infrastructure. In terms of power outages and broadband access, but the county has a broadband authority, have we as. An economic development office gotten in front of them to say, hey, this is something that we keep hearing? How can you all help us help them?
Typically, in, in the feedback I received, it's rural area adjacent and it. Unfortunately, at this, at this framework in time, I think it's just a waiting, waiting it out game. We have expansion that's anticipated, what is finishing in fiscal year twenty six.
They should involve, yeah.
So the, the goal is, uh we're getting there, it's just a matter of, of inconvenience up to this point, so hopefully we won't be hearing that, that same.
If I can add, I, I serve on the broadband authority board, so we'll have, we'll have um. Nearly a hundred percent access availability in the county. It's supposed to be by the end of twenty twenty five, probably be into twenty twenty six, but. And there are still some pockets where there are some one offs that are being addressed, but broadly, the county will. It will be available, you know, people still need to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Subscribe to it, uh and then I would just offer anytime you would get feedback from a company. Or a business around concerns, we, we should connect into a broadband office who can then maybe triage the issue more directly.
Yeah, in the, in the limited cases that we, we have heard feedback indicating um frustration with that connectivity, it's predominantly been from. Um folks working from home, um that, that are part of that business community or. Uh in, in instances of a, an outdoor market or a farmer's market or a festival, having a little bit of trouble with the. You know, the scan car, the square situation, uh so hopefully these, these things will be. Will be taken care of in, in the next little bit. That was a great question, thank you.
And when you made the comment about um, you know, working with them and sort of explaining what the resources are. Are there opportunities to, to get in front of maybe, I don't know if there's certain affinity groups or groups that beyond. Just individual businesses to provide those same sorts of things, I don't know. You know, the chamber's probably too high, but maybe there's some smaller groups that are, that are being, where you could provide those resources. Or it's, you know, I wonder if like C B I C or somebody like that might have an opportunity to present. You could say, hey, and, and maybe it's, you know, the city and the county present together, here, here's some things so you can understand how to. Start your business or, or get up and running.
Yeah, so um Ashley and um one of her counterparts in the city of Charlottesville meet um with the, well, you, why don't you tell it?
With the.
Uh start, with startups, do, going through a cohort, going through a business startup.
Yeah, sure, so we, as, as you all are well aware, and I feel, I feel a warmth from the room from another one of our ecosystem supports here. One of our partners in the community, Rock Aaduck. From Venture Central, um but the Virginia Small, I'm sorry, the Central Virginias. Small Business Development Center and the community. I'm terrible with acronyms today, but we do work with them to support a lot of the, the startup. Uh entrepreneurs to, basically how to navigate the, the system, if you will, to come in and first you need to get yours owning clearance. Then you need to get your business license and all the, all the different aspects of, of starting off uh in the. In the new business world with, with the different localities, but we're certainly always open to, to more connectivity that way.
One of the things that I'm hopeful that we can start to tackle now that we have the new strategic plan is to um can. Each of the three target sectors has a um a bullet in the implementation section around. Um convening, um and so we actually was talking to Ashley this morning about, you know, how do we, how do we breathe that to life? Um and there's some thought to, you know, could we bring, you know, in partnership with whatever professional organization in town they work with, so. Um I feel, we talk about Seville Biohub a lot, they're such a strong partner in the bio life sciences sector. Um you know, could we in partnership with Seville Biohub convene bio life sciences companies? Um give them some time to talk to us, have us have some time to talk to them and then maybe have a speaker. Um so that it's kind of a, a couple of hours, but there's kind of something in it for everybody. Um to be able to do some, some two-way sharing on, on what, um on what resources we're aware of, um and also give them some space to share. Um in a structured way, sort of what some of their high level concerns are. So that's work that we're, we don't have a.
We don't.
Timeline, but uh but we haven't.
Books yet.
Yeah, it's kind of the idea.
It's a natural partnership because so many of the, the issues that, that face the community or, or, or common interests. Uh don't, don't exist in a vacuum of geographical boundaries, so it, we share a lot of the same resources and share a lot of the same concerns and. And uh I think it's a good way to, to come on those efforts.
Alright, any other questions?
Here to be commended for this, I mean, visiting fifty is.
I didn't do it alone, I didn't do it alone.
But I do have.
You organized it, wasn't you?
But I do have. Are there examples of problem solved, solutions reached? Examples where a business would say, thanks to this outreach effort. We made an improvement in X or Y, because what you have here. Is there them telling you of their problems, but we don't have anything on here about improvements.
I knew you were gonna ask that question, I just felt it in my bones.
Yeah. The people who work for me are very used to me saying, don't talk to me about activity, talk to me about outcomes. And there's nothing in here about outcomes.
That's a valuable, I think that's a valuable resource of a, a question to take back and, and develop some. Case studies and some takeaways, maybe some testimonials that do indicate that, because. The first year of getting it off the ground, getting the mechanism in here, uh. Leaves us with a, a final result that, yes, like you said, that it, it looks, it's a big number, it would look. It would look even more impressive, I would assume, if there were some, some takeaways, right?
It will also.
The top of my head that I could steer you to, but I don't, due to the. Sensitive nature of the, the business visits, I, I want to maintain confidence with a lot of the uh. The visits that we have, because they are specific to each business that we do visit. But we've discussed too sometimes um inviting directors to attend different. Y A visits to, to uh see how that goes, and I don't know if you can do that one day.
It will also help you recruit other businesses to invite you in if they know that it wasn't just. Talk.
Right.
That it led to action, you know, if somebody needed skilled workers. Where they hooked up with U V A, where they hooked up with PBCC, did you facilitate a step forward?
Right.
If other businesses know that happened, they're gonna be more willing to meet with you.
Thanks.
Anything else? Alright. I do, actually.
As well, then I'll return the clicker.
So next item is Economic Development Strategic Plan Implementation. Um so I'm gonna let Emily do most of the talking here, uh but. What obviously came out of our discussions and with the strategic plan was. I need to make sure that we implement it and take the next steps to do that, so uh some point it was mentioned that. The residents and Steve could do that and help us develop that plan. I had talked to Emily and she was saying that they were planning to do it internally, but I said, well, look, we've got some money, but why don't we have them do it? So you don't have to spend your time doing it, so um she talked to Steve and, and they've been talking about proposals, so I'll let her. Kind of fill, fill us in on the, on the details on that.
Sure, thank you, um and thank you for the discussion uh about wanting to really see the. Plan not just sit on a shelf, but really be something that we are actively uh working towards. Um so what we had talked about was a scope of, a pretty limited scope of work, so the, the plan itself took um. Uh we talked about the plan, the plan before we actually executed, brought on a consultant to actually do the plans, and we, we spoke about the. The strategic plan process for about a year, the active work by residents was um probably closer to seven months. Um, the um, the implementation scope would be uh even more limited engagement, it would be about three months. Um, um, the um scope of work that we're talking about would be. A facilitated work session, two facilitated work sessions, one with staff, um and one with the E D A, so um. We're, we've talked about maybe your November E D A meeting, um. Um and then some of the outcomes from that would be a year one work plan. Um a five-year roadmap of, with some sequencing and prioritization of, of the um items that are in the strategic plan. Um and uh one thing that um I, I, I know has been on folks' minds has been. Um with the, with the funding that we've identified, sort of at the, the bottom line funds available to the E D A on your financial report. Um, how, how do we know, how do you all talk through um what to spend that, those funds on? Um and so coming up with an investment framework, so not, you know, a pass fail test, but sort of a, a, a questions to ask or a process to go through. To understand if uh there's a good opportunity for the E D A to use some of those funds. Uh would be the final thing that would be part of the deliverables, um. The um, the proposal that we received from um Stephen Pedego is hanging his shingle under a different. Um name right now, um and so it's uh Civic Soul, uh so a different company, but uh really a same, same technical support person. Um, uh and has, could, we have a proposal in hand that came in early this week, um that's just under ten thousand dollars. Um and so um we would be, um we would be uh looking at using E D A funding. To support that, that scope of work there, that was brought by the end of the calendar year.
And this, this would cover both sort of E D A implementation and E D O implementation. Any thoughts, questions? Alright, is there a motion? Do we need a motion? I assume we need a motion.
What do I, uh is it to appropriate the, it would be an appropriation motion, yeah, just a motion to approve the appropriation of fifteen, up to fifteen thousand.
I move that we approve the appropriation of up to fifteen thousand dollars to engage. The new Civic Soul um for the work as described in the discussion. Take part in the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Alright, approved. Uh next is the Afton Scientific Performance Agreement, although it says, I'm going to leave this discussion, I'm actually. So I will not be involved in this discussion, um do I need to sign another?
No, I mean, you sign one and it's good for five years.
Alright, that's good.
Yeah, it's, it's a matter of record for five years.
Okay, so we're just gonna pass that down the line.
Oh wait, did you, oh you signed one on this too?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we have a quorum, as long.
We've got two, it, it just, it's gonna have to be unanimous if we're gonna approve it. I think if you recuse yourself, it doesn't, it doesn't disrupt the quorum.
Right, right.
So we have a forum of two.
No pressure.
It's all we need.
I don't look at all that power.
Yeah. Why don't you pick the right two?
I think we need to, we need either Steve or Frank to kind of be chair to be.
Hey.
Correct, I'm trying. He's way more seen.
Alright, um okay, so um so just briefly, um the, uh this is an item that has been sitting out. Um as something that needed to be done for almost a year, so it was almost a year ago that we were celebrating the announcement, the governor's announcement. For the expansion of Afton Scientific, um incredibly exciting opportunity. Um the company has committed over two hundred million dollars um and to create over two hundred, just over two hundred new jobs. Um and um part, uh and the um, the in, a performance agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia. Is the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, which looks for a one-to-one match from the locality, uh where the uh, the expansion is occurring. Um and so um that is what we have um laid out today. Um so there, the, the one, the way that the county approached or recommended approaching the one-to-one match was um. Uh a total of five hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Economic Development Investment Pool with three benchmarks. Um one, um when they apply for their building permit for the new facility. Um of the first third of funding, the second, when they apply for, or when they receive their certificate of occupancy on that new building. Um and then the final one would be paid, um when they complete the terms of the agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia. Um and so the, the uh, the benchmark for that is when they've satisfied their obligations to the Commonwealth. Um this splits up the funding, not necessarily in time, um uh around a specific timeline, but sort of when these important milestones in their project development occur. Um and we think helps um mitigate any liability or risk to the county um by structuring it in that way.
Is there a projected timeline for when these benchmarks would be hit?
Um, they would be expecting to hit the building permits um in the next couple of months. Um and then their construction period, um I would imagine is between twelve and eighteen months. But I don't think we have a specific plan from them at this time. Um so it would, it would split it up over probably the course of um, uh from announcement, you know, three to five years. Um and at this point, you know, um two to four years out.
Right, to be, I think specific, the um, the state's agreement has a performance date, and I want to say December of twenty seven is uh. I can look at that, but that's incorporated into the, yeah, December thirty, well, December thirty first of twenty thirty. So.
That they would complete the.
Has to be completed by December thirty first of twenty thirty. The way ours is structured, as they meet a benchmark, within that time period, they receive our local, local payment.
Let me.
I disagree, the local match does not include any provisions for clawback, so if they make, they make a benchmark, they get the money.
Your packet and in front of you are two items that I just want to point out, one is um. Picker, I think it's the one at the back, uh that's the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement, this is. Um this is the agreement that's primarily the um between the E D P, the Commonwealth and the company. Um the county is a signator of that agreement, um and so part of today's resolution is to approve this, um the county signing of that. Document, and then the other is um the Economic Development Investment Pool Performance Agreement and Commonwealth Opportunity Fund Match Grant Document. Which is the thinner of the two, um and that is the agreement for the, the, the local match between the county and the company. But we have on that any questions?
So, this is no kidding, great, not that long, right, or?
Correct. This is a cash incentive.
So as part of the agreement, they commit to creating, it was something like two hundred jobs?
Two hundred and one jobs and two hundred and uh two million dollars in capital investment.
In, in terms of the jobs, did we have any information on salary expectations for those jobs? Or skill level?
Yeah.
Educational level, anything describing what those jobs are?
Yeah, so um primarily those jobs are manufacturing jobs, um and so there um, there, there's no. Um degree requirements associated with those positions, um and the Commonwealth, under the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund Program, will not. Um will not incent jobs that fall below the area uh median. will not incent jobs that fall below the area median prevailing wage. And so the the dollar value a year ago when we were initially discussing this one was a minimum of 58,000 on the jobs, on the manufacturing jobs. And then there were other jobs that you would expect with a company, sort of a corporate expansion of that magnitude. So folks in HR and finance and marketing, business development, but the lion's share of the jobs associated with this announcement were manufacturing jobs.
Is there any requirement for local or regional hiring? I mean, could they bring all 200 in from Alaska? Or is there any requirement that they need to do local hiring?
I know the 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 wage level associated with these jobs, that the the sense would be that the worker shed would be sort of a regional pool of talent. I don't believe they, and they do have requirements in the state agreement about the number of hours that employees must work and that they must be working in the Commonwealth.
Exciting and Commonwealth, that's the state's, that's the state's priority, state inclusion based workers.
But I don't believe that there's a specific requirement about fo- folks being within a certain time distance or mileage distance from the facility.
The Virginia is left is giving Efton Scientific $540,000 to locate here.
Yes.
To create 201 jobs. And so when does when does the when does the government get a return on that? Is there a projection of like taxes that those people, 201 people will pay?
There there's a formula that the state uses. It's not. The formula itself is not public information, but they they have part of the analysis that they do where they look at how to structure and how to sort of create the offer, the incentive offer. They're looking at things like income tax revenue to the Commonwealth. And then based on the business, any other types of tax revenue that would be coming from the business being located in Virginia to the Commonwealth as part of their analysis. So they have a they're looking at that as they create that that package.
So page six of the state agreements, speech to its section four to the break even of the state local incentives. State estimated that the Commonwealth will reach a break even point by the performance.
You know, I ask about the local hiring because I'm sure you're all familiar. One of the criticisms locally of business expansions or bringing in new employers is that they'll just bring people. That it won't benefit locals, that they will just bring people in. And that's sometimes a valid criticism and sometimes not. It would seem that going forward in the future, we might consider some sort of requirement about local hiring if we ever enter into another agreement like this using EDA funds. I'm surprised the state doesn't do it. But if we're gonna put in a lot of money, it seems like, and I'm not referring to this one, I don't want to hold this up, but I would think in the future that might be something we consider.
Yeah, I mean, I again, I think the based on the wage levels, the I think the sort of the assumption, the working assumption is that they're not going to be, folks wouldn't be moving here for these jobs. And so and so it's not part of the agreement. The the verification of that can be a challenge. The paperwork that has to go back and forth to be able to to make sure that that's that that is the case.
The agreements that we do enter into do have, they they require workforce adaptation letter that does indicate that a certain percentage of their workforce base does come from the the local area. So depending on the agreement.
And we have to make sure there's room for if we don't have enough people, they could meet the skill set that's required.
Right, yeah.
It's a good point.
What is the performance date?
Like the end of twenty thirteen? The the agreement in terms of if the facility is being one on, I want to say on the street extended. That's, I don't think it complies any other facilities.
Yeah, it's an additional, it's additional construction on the.
So what do you need from these two powerful?
Yeah.
Exactly.
But we have a motion.
Spring.
I move that the EDA adopt the resolution attached to the meeting materials as attachment foresee.
Do I second?
If you don't, we're.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Did you do an all in favor?
Do, let's do, we'll do roll call. Director Hood?
Here, I.
And Director Freeman? Motion, second.
I figured, that's why I started journey.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next is the staff report.
All right. I have accidentally included this twice now, but for real, welcome Sabud. I'm a die, who joined our team as the senior manager for economic development in July. And it is, we've we've now worked through a couple of projects together and Sabun just brings a wonderful level of expertise and 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 one really wonderful insight to the team. So we're we're just so glad to have him and wanted to finally be able to introduce him to you. And then last meeting, we talked about a joint meeting with the Charlottesville EDA. So we are threading the needle on, it is our turn, we've only done this, this will be the second one, but it's our turn to host. And so we're gonna borrow their meeting dates. It's the second Tuesday in October, not the third. And I think we checked before. Four o'clock in this room. We would recommend canceling the regular October meeting, which would have been the 21st then. And the working agenda, we actually met with the city team earlier today and we talked about the Innovation Corridor. You all had a presentation on the Innovation Corridor several months ago before the Go Virginia grant was awarded. Now the Go Virginia grant has been awarded and that work on that project is underway. And so it would be sort of a check in to sort of hear what some of the early efforts have found and uncovered. And and then the second topic would be the city has a strategic, the city economic development office has a strategic plan that is just under two years old and you all have a brand new one. And so we thought it would be a good opportunity to have a short tee up of what's in the two plans, overlaps are. And then have a discussion where we would put you all in small groups to talk about where you see some opportunities for collaboration.
And, okay, no, I'm just gonna check. The, if I recall correctly, the there's a consultant for the Innovation Corridor, somebody hired, it's same, isn't it the same person, same group that's doing the bio?
Yes, to economy partners.
Yeah, okay. Are they gonna be part of this or they not far out along?
I would have to check on if that was something that we could accommodate in their contract. But certainly the staff team that's sort of guiding the work that the consultant is doing, I think we could come up with some 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 early insights into the work that they're doing. It's actually been very fascinating. They've been looking at where is the real, you know, following the dollars of grant awards and partnership agreements. Where is the real sort of research acumen driven out of the University of Virginia? And then where are we seeing private sector activity, commercialization sort of coming from that to help us sort of refine a little bit? You know, biotech is a very large tent. What are our regional strengths in the biotech sector specifically? And then that hopefully allows us to be more strategic in how we do business attraction work. So that's kind of the the work, right now, they're they're very heavy into data analysis. And and we'll be sort of, so we've we've been sort of identifying a lot of the facts. Trying to get this straight and then we'll be able to transition into, so what do we do about it? And how do we, how do we build a good plan for the for the future?
Right, that sounds great.
So cancel the 21st?
Cancel the 21st, we'll send a, we'll send a revised calendar.
I had held on my calendar, sorry.
Will that be at four o'clock also?
Four o'clock, yes. And we'll have a Zoom, as we normally do, we'll have a Zoom for that. Just a quick comp plan update, the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have had work sessions in the month of September on the comp plan. There'll be one more work session with the Board of Supervisors in October and then continuing to work towards adoption later this year. Our strategic plan, the final document we received just a couple of days ago. They updated all the photos, we made a couple of text edits coming out of the the joint meeting that we had. That final document is now available online. You all just approved the implementation plan support, so we'll get working on that. And there's been, there's been some great just early things that are happening. So one I'll highlight. The Alamo County Public Schools is is taking the strategic plan and looking at their career pathways, pipeline programming, and looking at how to align those more strongly with our strategic plan. I'll be presenting to some of the staff that are working on that project at a professional development day later this month to to try to, they really want to, you know, make sure students are fully understanding what some of those career pathways can really look like. And then working with them to also find speakers for classes. So that's a tangible way that we're trying to bring the plan to life. And we'll continue to look for opportunities to to build on that in the in the months and weeks, weeks and months ahead. We are continuing to work with the state so that they are kind of aware of what we're interested in seeing. Because they often are the sort of the frontline of opportunities that come into the Commonwealth. And so understanding where there's some good alignment locally helps them be a better sort of coste ares to the companies that are coming to see them and puts us in a good position to be successful, which is really great. Just a quick update on funding requests, we've seen this slide before. The the new funding that we're looking at is that Economic Development Access Program by VDOT. The second read of our application is actually on the CTV agenda for tomorrow. And so we'll find out how we fared in that program. That's seeking $700,000 towards the road, the extension of Baldur's Road.
So because there was a first reading, did that mean, did we like make it pass to cut or just?
No one demanded it be removed from further consideration. And so they'll.
So that could happen, so we did get over them.
We got, so it is a gate. Our understanding is that doesn't often happen, but it can.
It's a very big.
And so they'll, it'll be up for action on their agenda tomorrow. And we'll let you all know how that fares. Just a couple of things that we've been in the middle of. The the, and some of you were at the Home Depot grand opening a couple of weeks ago. It was really exciting. Obviously, the EDA and the Board of Supervisors supported a public-private partnership for the Home Depot project. They hired 160 new jobs for the community, which is great. They have a a strong retail sales volume and so sales tax revenue to the county. We look forward to seeing how that impacts our books as we proceed forward. But really, a great opportunity to support what we hope is the sort of that first domino of redevelopment of the Fashion Square Hall property. That's that's the real headline on that project. We're so excited to have them in the community. Every time I drive by, that parking lot is full, no matter what time of day it is. And so we're we're really excited to have them. The top photo is from the Virginia Guest House. That is the new hotel and conference center that is being built at the Emmett and Ivy area of the University of Virginia. That's in the city of Charlottesville, so that's not a county project. But we think is a great opportunity for our region. We are almost the center of the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are a lot of statewide organizations that hold annual and quarterly conferences. And if we had a larger ballroom and meeting spaces, we we've strongly believed that we would be successful in getting a lot more of those conferences to locate in our area. And the spillover effects into county hotels, lodging options, restaurants, retails, sales are substantial. And so we're excited as that project is scheduled to come online next calendar year.
Is there a big ballroom?
700 people is what I, a ballroom that would accommodate 700 people. It's more than double the Omni, I believe. Yeah. So it's significant and they have breakout rooms and attached accommodation. There's, it's a hotel and conference center. There's event spaces sort of built into the property. It it'll be a really great.
We need it. We really, really needed that. We can use it too, right?
But yeah, it's, yeah. Sabud was able to join a VDOT Stars meeting that's currently, I'm not sure what Star stands for, but they're studying the Route 29 corridor, how to make sure that that continues to meet the needs of all roadway users. And so that's we are often invited to meetings like that to help bring sort of what are the employers saying, what are we hearing? How can we, you know, is there, are there things on the horizon that we should be incorporating into our modeling? And so that's a way that we can help provide support for our state partner for transportation. And then I was able to join the Charlottesville-Alamo County area Realtors at their Annual Development and Economic Summit to share about our new economic development strategic plan, put some of the recent job announcements on their radar. And also, as an effect of that, got to hear from professionals in the in the building industry and the Realtor industry, talking about interest rates and supply and demand headwinds. And so good opportunity to hear what's going on in the real estate sector. Wanted to do a quick shout out, I, as part of my role with the county, I serve on the Charlottesville-Alamo County Convention and Visitors Bureau, along with Superintendent Stupurtly, who chairs that body. They announced recently visitor spending is nearly a billion dollars in our region in 2024. That number has held, it it's inching up, but it's held around that billion dollar mark for the past three years, which is a very significant number. Food and beverage is actually the highest. So it's not lodging, it's food and beverage, which means we're getting a lot of day travel, day trips.
Where for food, where do they go?
Where do they go? They go to.
And restaurants.
Restaurants.
Not to go to food stores.
Yeah, not the grocery stores, not, yeah, not food line and and then not the food trucks, not they go to restaurants, so.
And the wineries would be in that food and beverage data as well. The tourism sector supports over 7,000 jobs and we're just excited to see those numbers continue to climb. Turn to my friend Ashley on B R A.
I'll be brief. Since we last met, we've had six visits. One for intelligence and national security and five in manufacturing and other, as other is this quarter's focal point. Next quarter will be agriculture and food processing.
We'll look for ways to get you all out on the farms.
Get your boots ready.
Did you meet with?
We, we.
Confidentiality purposes, we we report out at the, in the aggregate. And that's the staff report.
Oh, we're shortening up the motion now?
That's not.
We tried something new.
I didn't print off the actual.
I got one.
It was my idea.
I move the Alamo County Economic Development Authority going to the closed meetings authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2 dash 3711A of the Code of Virginia under subsection five to discuss and consider the location of respective business or industry with expansions of existing business or industry in the vicinity of Seminole Trail and Vanu Manisterial District where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries. where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Subsection six to discuss and consider the investment of public funds to the location of an industry in the Rio Magisterial District, where bargaining is involved with their management initially would adversely affect the financial interests of the EDA. And subsection six and twenty-nine to discuss and consider the investment of public funds or the board or amendment of public contract related to performance agreement with Agro Spears Inc., and involves the investment and expenditure of public funds, the public discussion of which would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the EDA and the county regarding the terms of the performance agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, going to close session.
community involved. From the EC forty four. I have a lovely watershed on my water.
All right, um, so I will, uh, we need to turn back on. Are we good? All right. I move the EDA certified by recorded vote that to the best of each director's knowledge, all in public business matters, lawfully exempted. Building requirements for the digital freedom of information and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting or heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Want to call the roll? Oh, I guess we need a second. Second. All right.
Our color roll. Director Wong, Director Storm.
All right.
Director Ben. Director Rodney.
All right. All right, uh, any other matters anyone else has? All right, then we are adjourned.
That is not accurate.
Until October fourteenth.
They got me laughing.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.